All right, it's 6:30. We'll open the meeting. Any need for executive session?
I had three things, Madam Chair. One, in legal, under litigation, a discussion of the Adams Road Solar Project. I suggest that we invite Mark Winslow from the Planning Commission to join us. Second, I have two personnel matters, one transfer station attendant, and one having to do with the town manager search.
Make a motion, go an executive session for those three items.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any need to amend the agenda?
I've got nothing.
Anyone else? We have a motion to adopt it.
Move to adopt the agenda, sorry.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything on the meeting minutes of January 5th? I didn't see anything.
Good to me.
Okay.
If that's all right, Joe, I'll pass these on to you for signature.
John, do you have that number?
I do. Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
That's the number.
That's the number.
Trust me, Jennifer.
Sorry, the last time I almost had a stroke because of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Recording in progress.
Open there? You weren't here. You were up.
Pass that on to Tom then. You're not on that one either. All right, anything on the orders?
I see there was a, well, it's install a generator at the wastewater treatment plant 31,000. Was it a whole new system?
It's a brand-new generator. The Trent, the water and sewer departments have never had a generator down there. We've tried to get FEMA grants, which have always fallen through, but this time, we had some money left over in the Depot Hill Sewer Project to get that done. There was a $15,000 deposit originally, this is the balance.
Figured it must be a new system.
So, John, that GIS just got set up for the assessors. Didn't we discuss that there might have been ARPA money for that?
We did, but then Lisa Wright and I said that there had so much money in the reassessment fund, probably $50,000 or $60,000 more than they will need.
Oh, okay.
Thought that this was an off-budget way to pay for it as well.
Yeah, for sure, okay.
We can always make that change if you wish.
Well, no, I'm sure we can find other things to use it for.
No question.
I just remember us having discussed it briefly.
As I usually do, we sent $2 million to the school.
Yeah.
They need it.
There's a surplus in the education fund. Did you hear Governor Scott's?
Oh, there is.
A lot, I forget how many number, but quite a bit.
If there are no other questions, I'll send these down.
There was a-
Oh, sorry.
Wastewater jetter on the Depot Hill, $46,000, is that?
That's the other final investment with money left from the Depot Hill Sewer Project. That pretty much wraps up spending. There probably will be a couple of closeout engineering figures as we close the books on that project, but that's about it. Yep.
Good enough for me.
Here you go. Here's the two main orders, and then there's one debit card. And here's payroll, Joe.
Town managers report?
Yes, thank you, Alicia. There will be another sidewalks scope committee meeting on January 25th to discuss the most promising sidewalk routes, again, based on public input and constructability. The consultant will then conduct the second Alternatives Public Hearing to coincide with the February 2nd Select Board Meeting. So at the next Select Board Meeting, we will have on the agenda, as part of the regular meeting, that's public hearing. GMP has been asked for input on how and at what cost the town might achieve better illumination at the Route 7 Plains Road intersection. There's an email in tonight's packet. We can do another 80 watt, which is kind of maxing out how much lighting they can produce at a pole. If we want to ask them to do it, I think it's a free installation, $28 additional per month on our lighting bill. And this would be located at the northeast corners telephone pole. So you know we have one at the cemetery, which we have brightened. This would be right at that corner. Is that something you all would like to proceed with?
Yeah, because it's hard, that's a hard corner.
I was noticing, I noticed coming around here tonight that where that come off seven and kind of that hook there. If there was a pole right in that hook there.
If.
Maybe there can't be.
Well, I'll ask them if, for some reason, they might be able to do that for us for free. But if not, I think that's the next best option.
The other lights way over here by the cemetery.
Right. This one would be, I think I have a map.
And I would, if they could possibly put one in that kind of a hook thing there.
Well, what we've got here is the intersection heading north. We're talking about, here's the cemetery's pole where we just increased the lighting. We're talking about putting it on this pole right here at the corner. I agree, but I don't know that there's-
Maybe they can't do it.
If you'd like, I will ask, and if it looks like there's anything to explore further, we'll hold off. But unless that, if that's not the case, we'll just proceed with this corner pole.
That'd help some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That'll make a big difference.
Yeah, for sure.
Must be dark down there.
Good point. Once the sun goes down, it's pretty dark. Oh, to continue. Crickets, crickets. The deadline for parties to supply information requested by the Act 250 Commission on the bridge replacement project near the mobile station had been extended to January 21st. Town Planning Commission held a meeting on Thursday, January 6th to discuss how to respond to their request for more information, this being the Act 250 Commission. And they have provided six documents that they feel are responsive to that Act 250 Commission. On Thursday, January 6th, I met with, virtually with George Yan about the Adams Road Solar Project. Turns out, he's the departing project manager, and his colleague Linda, I'm sorry, Lina Saldariaga is going to be his successor on it. We discussed the status of the project and the Act 248 permitting process. We also discussed misgivings that the Planning Commission and Select Board have had about the project and ways in which the Select Board might have some of their concerns mitigated. We plan to speak again soon, and I'd suggest that we, since this matter is in litigation, that we have an executive session discussion about that this evening. As to Dollar General, the state has notified Dollar General and the town of several relatively minor punch list items that need to be addressed. Town manager has contacted Matt Casey of the Zeremba Group to discuss the matter. And the Zeremba Group has said they plan to get to these items in the spring, so we've joined them in asking for a permit extension to run through May. Vtrans seems agreeable with a couple of exceptions that they want dealt with sooner, and I've asked Matt Casey to let me know how soon they can attend to those. A tax sale has been scheduled for Tuesday, January 25th at 2:00. A total of six properties were originally referred to Attorney Cutford. As of now, just two of these cases remain unresolved, and I would say there's a decent possibility that one or both can be resolved before the tax sale. There's been an approach to Chief Hempel from Highway Crew member Greg Eastman, who loves to cut trees, and Greg has suggested that during this relatively quiet period of the year, the fire department might like a few or most of the trees taken out at the site of the future Florence Fire Department substation. If that's agreeable with the town, we'll give Greg permission to go ahead.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, they're good deal. Significant cost to attach.
No, that's going to be in-house. That's Greg Eastman on the Highway Crew, and sometimes this is a slow time, and if he can get some work done.
Get some wood out of there.
Yeah.
More good news about ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act. You know, originally, they had told us that there were only a few relatively narrow categories in which we could spend our roughly $830,000, which we will be receiving over two years. We already have half of it. And now, the final rule that has emerged from the Department of the Treasury in Washington seems to give smaller towns a lot more discretion. So basically, if your ARPA funds are less than $10 million, and we qualify, we can pretty much spend it on any governmental purpose, any normal governmental purpose. So instead of just limiting it to water, sewer, broadband, and COVID response, we have a lot more latitude. I've been putting together a list of just suggestions that you might want to consider, and maybe by February 2nd, I'll have some pricing associated with those so you can at least start your conversation about that.
Great, yeah.
So that's good news. For once, a little bit less red tape from Washington. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Any Select Board member remarks this evening?
Yep, Regional Matt last night. We talked about the Adams Solar, that came up. And I just told him that both the Select Board and Planning Commission hadn't taken a stance either way. We weren't against it, or we weren't for it, because there were a lot of things we didn't understand about it. And so that, and what I consider to be bad news from the meeting was, Ed Boe will be done at the end of this fiscal year.
Oh, no way. That's too bad.
I have a meeting Tuesday with Chief Warfield in Rutland Town in regards to state dispatching.
And there was something in the packets, just giving some background to that. Good.
All right, anybody else have anything? Any public comment this evening? No? All right, we only have one item for old business, which is the update on hiring a new town manager, which I believe most of that would be an executive, unless you have anything to-
Yeah, I'd say so. Just broadly speaking for the public, I can tell everybody that the Select Board conducted in-person interviews with three candidates on January 11th, with the town manager also speaking separately with them. Rick McGuire of VLCT is hoping to have further discussions with the Select Board, and that's probably good enough.
Okay, thanks. All right, well, let's skip down to discussion of operations of Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District.
Doug Perkins here. I'm the newly-elected Chair of newly renamed Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control. I'm also the most junior member of the Board of Trustees, whether there's a cause-and-effect relationship there, the people decide. With me tonight is Jeff Schuman. He is the newly-elected Vice Chair. And also in the room with us, of course, is Steve Belcher, who you know. He's one of your representatives. He also happens to be the Secretary of the Board. We're here tonight for two things. One, so that you can put a face to the names. We'll introduce ourselves, Jeff and I will introduce ourselves briefly to you. And then, more importantly, if you have any questions or concerns about the insect control district, the direction it's headed, we're here to answer those for you tonight. So, my background, I spent 22 years in the Coast Guard. After college, as an operations officer. Then I spent 13 years as a consultant, working for companies that had contracts with the Coast Guard. Amazing how that works. And then after that, I got tired of that Washington DC rat race. Since I'm a fourth-generation Vermonter, decided that I was coming back here. We bought some property up on Fern Lake in Lester, built our retirement house, and called that good enough. I have a master's degree in public administration that I acquired along the way, and somehow, the board decided that I would be a good candidate to be the Chair or something. That's where we are. Jeff?
Hi, good evening. I am currently living up on Lakes, Lake Dunmore and Salisbury. I retired in 2017 after a 37-year career as a public educator. Seventeen in classroom, 20 as a school administrator, the last 13 in central offices, working as a superintendent. In retirement, I have three part-time gigs. The Vice Chair of the OCW is one. I'm the President of the Lake Dunmore-Fern Lake Association, and I'm a ski ambassador up at Shiloh Bush Ski Resort. So this is the patience now, but the beard comes off and ski season's over. Like Doug, you know, we're both really interested in hearing your comments and trying to do the things we can do to make the district a better supplier to all of its members in whatever you see is the things you want to get from it.
That's who we are. Do you folks have any questions or concerns that you want to give to us?
I've heard mostly good feedback.
Yeah, no, you've done, I mean, I live out in Florence, and now, you, you know, if mosquitoes start showing up within a day or two, you guys are through, and it knocks them back down. So I think you've done a good job.
And I think the only thing that wasn't overly negative was just like the notification process. But then we started, John always makes sure he reaches out, and, because I'm the admin for the town's Facebook page, and then our rec director has, makes sure she puts it on her page. So it's getting out there. That kind of seemed to solve a lot of that issue, so.
Gets posted on our website, ahead of time, has to, so that people have public notice that we're going to be out doing spraying. And when we do the larvicide, that's a different story. We just have to meet certain state standards for number of larvae present, but then when we get those standards, then we get in there and apply the larvicide.
Yeah.
That's a far less contentious part of our operations than the spraying for adulticide.
Right, yeah.
So while I have joined, you know, the listserv or whatever it is that the district has notifying us of spraying in a certain neighborhood, that's a great service. Will also supplements that sometimes and sends me a direct email, which I appreciate. Then I'm able to talk to Alicia or Jen about putting it on Facebook. But any person in any of the covered towns, I think, can sign up if they go to your website and sign up to get those notifications of adulticide, right?
Direct look? If you say so. That's something that I don't know, but we'll certainly find out.
That's how I got on the list. I just signed up for it.
I suspect Will has been very good about keeping people appraised of what's going on. And that's obviously a critical part of what we do, because people need to know, both those who want to be sprayed and those who don't, what we're up to. It's an open dialogue, has to be, and we try to do our best. I know Will's been very proactive in that way. Anything else?
No, you guys have been doing a good job.
I'm a Gogonya, of course. I live on the other end of the town, by the Rutland Town Line, but ever since the state has taken over the Farmainville Farm and other lands in that area, I think that mosquito business is growing like crazy. And I've always pushed that the state hasn't contributed to the problem that they've created. And correct me if I'm wrong, if any of you folks know better, but my understanding was when they bought, took over that property, that there was some writing in there that if mosquitoes became a problem, that they would stand behind us to some extent. And I don't think they have. People that have lived up in that neighborhood have complained about, ever since they flooded them meadows and stuff, the mosquitoes have been hell.
There's three things I can say about that. One is, the state gives us money in the form of a grant every year for larvicide, not for adulticide. Total adulticide cost comes from what the town's contributing. Lands that are in a conservation easement, we have separate agreements with those landowners, if you will, to either treat or not treat. And a lot of those conservation easements don't want to be treated. That's their decision, and we have to respect that. And the third point I would make is that the state also engages in trapping and testing for larvae over and above what we do. So they're keeping track of where the problem areas are. But they're not doing anything about it in terms of adult mosquitoes. Just they're keeping track, and their interest is more disease than nuisance. West Nile and Triple E, they're trying to make sure that we don't have a problem with those anywhere where mosquitoes are prevalent. It doesn't really answer your question, I know.
Well, it seems to me, and maybe I've got it wrong, but it seems to me that the state hasn't given us the support and hasn't showed the interest to work with us that they could have. I don't know whether the rest of any of the other board members or some of these folks have been on as long as I have, but we've talked about this. I came on the board right after that deal went through. I'll tell you right now, I never was in favor of it, because I could see that's nothing more than a mosquito tick habitat up there. And we went up to a meeting, John was there, there was a bunch of us, and there was an expert there from the state, and he said, oh, we've got some brand-new kinds of fish.
He's in our video call tonight show.
That was the fish killer that were going to eat all those mosquitoes. The fish were going to eat all the mosquitoes. Remember what they told us?
Thanks for backing me up. But these new fish that were going to be into that flood, we're going to take care of the problem. I don't think they have. They've caused the flooding of a lot of acreage up there, a pile of it, in that whole neighborhood. And of course, the creek floods, that's another thing you can't do anything with. But flooding those big meadows and holding that water there, it promotes, I believe it promotes it. And I just want to remind everybody that I don't think the state has stood behind us as well as they could have and should have. I've said enough. Thank you.
Name of the property again, please, so I can-
Farmainville?
Well, it's a Farmainville property.
Farmainville, yeah.
I think Ducks, I'm not sure, is it?
Ducks Unlimited.
Ducks Unlimited started out with it.
Yeah.
Ducks Unlimited.
But then it was transferred, or is it, who has it now? Fish and Wildlife, or? I'm not sure what entity even the state.
State somewhere, yeah.
The whole thing, it comes right down through, it's even down here by the Pittsburgh Transfer Station. It's all the same.
I think Jeff in Goshen is quite a knowledgeable source on that topic.
He's the big duck hunter.
Because he was with Ducks Unlimited at the time.
And I know he's a member of Ducks Unlimited, so, okay, we'll talk to Jeff about that. Just so we know the background. Yeah, that's another thing. We're going to be meeting with the state grant administrator in another week to talk about issues of mutual interest. This is on the list now.
Great.
Not, they're in the Department of Ag, and sometimes the Department of Conservation, environmental people are not in Department of Ag, so. We'll see.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for having us. I would remind you that you do have three representatives that sit on the board. John is one, Steve is the other, and Mike Blaisdell, who's not here tonight, but who is the immediate past Chair of the group, is your third. So please, they know how to get ahold of Jeff and I. If anything comes up that you need to pass to the mosquito district, please let those folks know. They'll make sure we know, and I'll go from there.
And that's a good reminder. Mike Blaisdell called today, asking about my plans when I get done. And I told him that I'm already living out of town, so the town should look for a new alternate. Steve and Mike have the regular rep seats covered, but I'll be putting out a notice, looking for an alternate willing to serve in the absence of those two. So if anybody's interested in serving on the Otter Creek Watershed Insect Control District, please let me know.
Yep, Board of Trustees, exactly right. Those representatives are, just as their name implies, they're your representatives. Their role is to make sure your interests are made known to the rest of the board. And then we work collaboratively, obviously, to try to address the communal interests across all the five towns. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Yes, you too. Okay, so let's now go into remarks from Pittsburgh Representative to Otter Creek Consolidated Communications District.
Yes, we've got Tony Ferraro here, who's recently been appointed to represent the town once Kimberly, or Samantha Jackson, I think, stepped down. Anyway, I had a very good talk with him, and we agreed it'd be good to introduce him to the Select Board and to have him give us a bit of an overview as to what the OCCUD is up to.
Hi, so my name's Tony Ferraro. I moved to town, me and my family moved to town last February. I've been, I was in the tractor parade and a couple of other things, but I would have liked to have been there in person tonight, but I had a board meeting for the OCCUD meeting prior to this, and I didn't think I could get over there in time to do the meeting. So I created a small PowerPoint presentation, which I believe John has made copies of to present. I don't, mostly that information is for background. I don't want to, I don't want to read it to you. What I was hoping to do is just sort of give you a picture of where the Communication District is, where we're at, and where we're going. the Communication District is, where we're at, and where we're going, over the course of the next couple of years. And then the last, the last thing I wanted to talk about is sort of some of the, some of the places where the town can help us, the, Pittsburgh in specific, but in the towns in general, in the CUD can help us over the cost of broadband for, for folks around, around the town. So if you, if you folks have any questions, let me know. Do you want me to present this, John?
I think, I think a five or 10-minute kind of overview of what is the issue and how the towns and the CUDs are dealing with it would be very helpful.
Yeah, okay. So can I share my screen? Is that possible?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to, okay, can you folks see my?
Yes.
PowerPoint presentation? So, like I said, I don't, I don't want to try to, not sure how, if I can go to presentation mode in this. Can you still see it?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, this way I can read it and you can read it, and it'll all make sense. So this first slide is just really to describe what our mission is, and our mission is really around this, this last bit here, excuse me. Bringing universal service to every address with an electricity connection for connection to the internet. And, you know, the reason behind forming this Communication District is, basically, it's a municipal corporation. It's, it's a, it's, it's given, it's given standing via the legislature to, to basically act as a municipal corporation. So as such, we have access to some federal money and some state money, and potentially the bond market for municipal bonds that typical internet service providers don't. There's a lot of different ways that folks in these individual CUDs are, are going. Some of the CUDs are essentially becoming their own internet service provider and building networks to provide service to individual towns and individual homes. Some, like Southern Vermont, and most likely the way Otter Creek will go, are, we're looking to partner with existing ISPs, internet service providers, to build out the network and supply internet to everybody. This is just some, this is just some definitions. When we talk about universal service, we're talking about basically providing a fiber-optic internet connection to every household in the, in the member towns that, that can achieve a speed of at least 100 megabits per second upload and download speeds, which is pretty good, but it's not, obviously, it's not as, as high as you can get in some places. But it's much better than what a lot of folks have already. We, we talk about folks who are underserved, and that's people who don't have a connection that's at least 25 megabits per second or download, and three megabits per second upload. And then folks who are underserved, sorry, unserved is basically folks who don't, who can't get at least four megabits per second upload, one megabit per second download speed. The state's done a pretty good, this is a listing of various folks who are in our CUD, and you can see I, I bolded, made Pittsburgh a little bit bigger, just so you can get an idea. You know, we have, we have roughly 19, excuse me, 19 miles of roads around town that, that do not have fiber or cable right now. And then if you, we talked about those sort of three buckets of, of buildings. In the CUD, there's roughly 22,000 buildings. In Pittsburgh, by the state's accounting, there's 1,400. And you can see, there's a relatively small number that, that are served at 100 by 100. And I think most of those are along sort of the Route 7 corner, maybe a little bit off. And then there's, the sort of lion's share of folks have access to 253, which is sort of your typical cable, some DSL service is that. And then there's, there's a, there's a bunch of folks who are underserved or not served at all. And that's, that's a, that's a, obviously, that's a problem that is what we're trying to fix, right? We're, as the CUD, we're trying to eliminate these two categories of buildings. So if you, I mean, basically, what we're, where we're at today is, we've, we've done a preliminary engineering study to try to figure out what it'll take to build a fiber-optic network that'll reach every, sort of every place in each of the towns that are part of our CUD, that, that also have, has a grid connection. So we're not looking to connect folks' hunting camps or, you know, weekend getaway camps up in the, up in the hills, but we, we, our estimate is that's going to cost north of $70 million, which is obviously a lot of money. Our plan is, is to partner with one or more of the providers who are in the area. So there's, there's a lot of folks, or a lot of interest from Consolidated Communication, and a lot of interest from, uh, Telco. We've had some discussions with some other broadband providers, even folks like Google Fiber, to try to bring service to, to all the, all the different homes. And our next step is, is really to issue a RFP. Tonight, the OCCUD board approved us developing the RFP to issue to internet service providers and, and get their responses for trying to figure this, trying to solve the underserved and unserved folks. This is just sort of a discussion about where the money's going to come from. So the, the goal is to have a universal service fiber-optic network. The money's going to come from federal state grants, revenue bonds if we need them. Our partner, they're going to have some contribution to this. And then one of the things that, that we've recently learned is that the towns can contribute some money to this. At the end of the day, you know, what, how, how do these monies get paid back? They get paid back by the subscriber fees, which is what, you know, the normal subscription fees that you would pay the ISP, and then if, if we need to, if we need to issue any kind of bond or, or other kind of financing, then there would be some kind of repayment surcharge. At the end of the day, the, the money that needs to be paid back by the subscribers, by the, by the individuals who are serviced by this network, is this, is this bond bucket of money. And so anything that the towns can do to contribute to lower the amount of money that we would have to borrow would, would help to reduce the, the cost to the, to the subscribers. Okay? And then this is sort of just a, and I, just a little graphic to figure, to show you where, where things are going. This lower bit is sort of the physical, this is what the project needs, right? So the project needs to be planned, it needs to be funded, built, and then eventually we'll have universal service. In, in the, what the OCCUD is doing is, our next step is developing and issuing this request for proposals. Then we'll partner with one or more ISPs. Together, we'll build the network, and then obviously, we will operate and maintain the network. And everybody should, you know, at the end of that, folks who want internet service will have pretty good internet service for, you know, to, to basically help with things like working from home, or, or, you know, their, their whole day-to-day stuff, which is becoming more and more dependent on the internet. Couple of things that, that I want to just highlight. The first is, there, there are matching funds, there are state matching funds, so there's a pot of money, and I can get this information to John later, I just learned about it today. But there's, there's some money that if the town contributes, the state will match it, which will lower the cost of money that we might have to borrow. And then there's another opportunity. As part of developing the OCCUD and, and forming it, we asked for folks to, to tell us if they needed support to, to get internet, you know, in, in the meantime, because obviously our project is going to take a while. It's going to take several years. And so there's another, there's an opportunity, and, and we actually have Sean Good, I believe, is, is on the call as well. He and his neighbor have requests, they live on, I think it's Blue Quarry Road, correct, Sean?
Yeah.
And in, over in Florence, and they've asked for some support to, to connect their, their residences, because they, they don't have adequate service now. And Comcast has asked them for quite a substantial amount of money to, to, to connect their, their residences. So I'll let Sean have a little talk, and then we can go to any kind of questions that folks have.
Yeah, great. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
And me?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm, I'm in Essex right now, at my son's high school hockey game, so, apologize, being there in person. I'm hoping this connection works well for what we need it for, but I appreciate the opportunity to, to talk to everybody, and thanks to Tony for that introduction and kind of explanation OCCUD is, is doing. Just a little bit of background, you know, we fall in the category on Blue Quarry Road, I think of what Tony would call unserved. We do have internet connection, but it's, it's DSL over Consolidated Communications phone line. On paper, our download speeds are supposed to be three megabits per second, and our upload speeds are one. In reality, our download speeds range between 0.6 and 1.2 megabits per second download, and our upload speed is half of that. They say that's the fastest they can get to our house. We've been living with it, been at that house for 20 years now, hasn't gotten any better. And, you know, we, we keep seeing news and, and progress and governors, you know, directives to expand broadband, and we keep waiting for it to come our way. And as a matter of fact, it comes right up Fire Hill Road, right past the junction of where our house is on Blue Quarry Road. We're only 1,500 feet down the road from the corner of Fire Hill. But Comcast, who has the broadband cable internet line up Fire Hill, says that it would be, you know, mostly on our dime to bring it down the road. And there's only two homes on that road. There's myself, which is at the end of the road, and then there's what used to be Don Isabelle's home, and is now owned by Chris Nussling, bought it last year. You know, it, it's just the two of us. And so it's really kind of a situation where the incentive really isn't there for the communications or utilities districts that do this on their own, in terms of an expansion. And what we're seeing around us is, you know, neighbors getting together and getting Comcast to build out in their area. And there was some money available last year through the LECAP program, and so I think Comcast expanded the line further down Fire Hill Road with help through the LECAP program. I think four or five houses got high-speed connection up there, and some of those people are reporting, you know, 200 to 500 megabit per second speeds. At 0.6 to 1.2 megabits per second, my son can't connect to his online high school classes when he has to be at home. You can't watch streaming video in any way. It's, it's email and it's poor at best, and it's just really, really difficult. So I took the sort of initiative to contact Comcast, same as what the neighbors did up the road on Fire Hill last year, and just inquired about what the true cost would be to bring it down our road. Of course, the more people you connect, the cheaper it gets, but we're kind of stuck because we only have two homes on the road that we, you know, that we can kind of draw from. But my neighbor, Chris, who is on their way to Florida right now to take care of an elderly relative and couldn't be here tonight, and I, we've been talking, and we reached out to Comcast, we got a quote back for, I think the total bill cost was 15,000 or 18,000 dollars, but with money available from Comcast and the neighbor sharing expenses, it actually comes to $2,400 per household, which I was elated at overall, honestly. That seemed like a great deal to me, and that would be out of my pocket. I'd be willing at this point to pay that kind of money, just to get our house connected. But that depends on both of us doing it. If it was only one, just myself, for instance, it would be, I think, $6,800 for us to connect that. But then I've been hearing about, you know, ARPA money being available, being, you know, given out to towns, and I started reaching out to Tony and Bill Moore and some other people to see if there is anything like LECAP available right now to help. And, you know, right now, there is not, but I had made a suggestion to Tony that, or at least asked him what he thought about the possibility of talking to the town and seeing if some of that ARPA money that sort of is earmarked for helping broadband expansion could be used as like a grant for residences like us that are kind of stuck, really, and, you know, it's, it's us that's driving it if we want to get it. And, you know, my hope is, you know, maybe Pittsburgh might be able to create some sort of, you know, application or grant process where you could, you know, apply for, you know, some sort of financial support to help pay some of that personal cost, offset some of that personal cost that Comcast is, you know, would charge us. So I think the way we have to do it is, we have to pay the cost upfront, Comcast builds it out, and, you know, and then they connect you, and then like Tony said earlier, there's, you know, a monthly subscription fee beyond that. But honestly, it, it's, it's kind of unsustainable at this point in time, and internet is such a critical part of our life, to live down a road like we do and have the kind of service that we have. It, it's, it'll sit there and spin for five minutes while you try to open a website sometimes. It's just almost unbearable. And I, I'm ready and at the point to just spend the money, if I can scrounge it up, to pay for it myself, but I'm, I'm, you know, hoping that Pittsburgh might be able to implement some sort of, you know, funding system that can help people that are sort of in that category Tony described as completely unserved right now. So, you know, that's about, oh, just realized my phone's in the door. You know, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I don't know how familiar everybody in the room there is with Fire Hill Road. I don't know how familiar everybody in the room there is with Fire Hill Road and the Blue Quarry Road in particular that I'm on, which is a dead-end road. The problem, part of the problem is that the phone line ends on my lawn. It's a public road right down my driveway that Pittsburgh maintains, but the pole on my lawn is the last pole on that line. It's a dead-end line, and for some reason Comcast or Consolidated says that they physically can't send a signal any faster to my pole. And I'm just sort of out of options at this point. So that's about all I have to say, unless you have some questions.
I'll just say that I've had a similar experience, Sean, on Sugar Hollow Road, and I've made the OCCUD aware of it as well. Couple of years, maybe it was last year when the LECAP money came out, I got about 10 other residents on Sugar Hollow Road interested in kind of pooling resources to try to deal with the great big Comcast number that they give you. And yes, it is based on density and how many others will kick in. But even with $3,000 per household grants, which I think was the amount that was available, we still couldn't find a way to afford it because it was still so expensive to take it from where it stops, pretty close to the Plains Road intersection, all the way toward the Brandon Line, which is where all these neighbors are strung out relatively sparsely, unfortunately. So I feel your pain on that. I guess one concern I have is any policy that the town develops should obviously treat similarly situated people in a similar fashion. So maybe we'd want to learn more about how many underserved people there would be in this universe that could be eligible for such help, and how many underserved. Maybe that's where Tony can help us with the quantification of that. But certainly, we do have this ARPA money, and the Select Board can use it as they see fit. One of the categories which they've considered is somehow supporting broadband.
Yeah, definitely. Go ahead.
And just for clarity, we will get to Sean's house, but it, you know, it may be a few years. And so...
Right.
You know, if he wants to do anything, or, you know, if we want to help people who are in similar situations to him sooner than what we're going to be able to do as a communication district, you know, it would be the town. And we cannot, because of the way the regulations are written, we can't, we can't actually connect him to cable for his internet. We have to do fiber optic based on the way, the way the requirements are, making it a future-proof technology that has at least 100 by 100 download and upload speeds. Anyway, I know there was a lot of jargon and a lot of sort of internet gobbledygook in what I said. I am happy to talk to folks individually or come back if you have questions or want to learn more or just, you know, want to figure out what all we're doing. But like Sean said, I think, you know, he's got a specific, he had a specific idea that, you know, perhaps the town could create some kind of a pool of money that folks could apply for to help defray the cost to connect themselves.
Okay.
So anyway, that's...
So Sean, have you contacted VTAL?
I have, and VTAL says they can't reach my house either with their Wi-Fi tower service because of the topography that I'm surrounded by.
Well, that's why I wonder, because it's on my silo. So, and I, that was, oh, I bet that, well, it was, it was over five years. That sat on my silo for six years doing nothing. And when COVID hit and my son had to do school from home, I had, I understand, I feel for you on your issue because I had the same thing. And I got hold of the state. They finally got after VTAL, and within a few weeks, it was up and running. It works very well. But again, the topography, it may not get to where you are.
Yeah, I don't have a line of sight. They actually came out and they checked into it for me, and I have no direct line of sight to any towers located anywhere around me. And they were, you know, offering up to 30 megabit per second downloads over the air, which I thought was great, even though Tony said earlier he thought 100 megabits per second was still kind of slow. I would kill for that kind of speed right now when I'm getting one. But yeah, during the height of COVID, when my son was a freshman in high school, I was driving him every day to sit in the parking lot at the Pittsburgh Town Library to connect to Wi-Fi there. It was the only way he could get video connection with his classes. And that's really just unacceptable now, in my opinion, in this day and age, you know, for him to have to sit in a car all day long to go to school.
And Sean and I did explore the other opportunity with, you know, the satellite link connection, and it's just not available yet to his premises, so.
Right.
So is this, if I'm reading the chart right, does that mean there's 77 houses in Pittsburgh that are unserved? Yeah, I can't hear you.
Yeah, sorry. I'm not qualified to operate. Yeah, there are 77 houses that are lacking at least four megabits per second.
Okay.
And two of those houses are Sean and his neighbor.
Okay.
Now, there's a whole map, and I, there's a link to where I got all this data in the PowerPoint. I sent the electronic file to John, so if you want to go and look at it, you can do it. I didn't make these numbers up, and they came from the state website. And there are maps. It's not a very easy map to read, but there are maps that show every residence, every building in every town that tells you whether or not they have, what level of internet they have currently available, at least as of last, late last year.
Okay.
And so one of the things that we're trying to do as a CUD is sort of build a map that shows where everybody, you know, where the folks who are underserved or unserved are so that we can obviously make those priorities right. Because we don't, you know, I don't need faster internet on Route 7, where my house is, but, you know, folks like Sean and folks who live a little bit more off the beaten path, you know, are kind of disadvantaged. By their background, they are disadvantaged.
Mike Blaisdell, are you raising your hand? Are you there? I can't hear you.
Mike, you're muted.
There you go. Sorry about that, folks. Good evening. I'm in the same boat. My family also, as Sean, more ways than one. I just actually finished an OB game with my daughter's basketball, and I'm in Pittsburgh Town Offices, and this meeting for the same reason. I don't have internet access at my home. That would be fat enough to do Zoom, which is up on Sugar Hollow. Mike Grefford, Tony, is if we do pay for connection to have service, when you guys do get onto our road, would there be reimbursement for the lines? And also, if we sell the property after connecting, how does that, would that transfer hands to the new owner, or would there be an option for you guys to buy it? Or, I mean, there's a lot of money that we'd have to put up to get connected, and in the long run, I mean, we'd like to be reimbursed for it if they're going to come do it anyways.
Yeah, so the short answer is I don't think so. The, the, the mission of this CUD is to connect everybody who wants it to a fiber optic network, and that's going to take a while. It's going to take probably at least two years. And that will be, the way you would pay for that would be through a small service charge, relatively small service charge to your bill. Okay? So if you're getting a $70 bill from whoever the provider is, that'd be a $10, $15, whatever it is, per month, add on to help defray the cost for, if we need to borrow money to help fund the network. If we don't need to fund, if we don't need any money to fund the network, then all you'd be paying for would be just some small administrative fee to help us do oversight for whoever the provider is to make sure that they're giving good customer service and things like that. If there's, if there, you know, and so if it doesn't, I don't believe there's any mechanism for us to reimburse homeowners for stuff they did before we got to them. I totally get where you're coming from. I just don't think there's a mechanism for us to do anything about that as a CUD. I'm happy, Michael, to chat with you individually about it, but I don't think there's much I can, that I can promise you. Actually, I can't promise you anything, so.
So you're talking this surcharge, and I get it, you need to get your money back. What about those people that, in this CUD, that already have internet service? Are they going to be paying this surcharge also to offset the cost of everybody else?
My understanding is no. It would only be the folks who are connected to the Uni-Fiber Optic Network.
Through the CUD, okay. So essentially, what he's asking, he is getting paid back. In other words, if he's already connected, he's not going to be paying that surcharge, so technically, he is sort of getting paid back.
Yeah, he wouldn't be paying the surcharge.
He wouldn't be paying, so, right.
I don't know how long it's going to take him to recover the investment, right? It's a $3,000 investment. That's a lot of, that's a lot of $10 a month.
Right.
Well, yeah.
I agree.
Twenty years, but yeah, yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Tony.
Yeah, no worries.
Does anybody else have any other questions? All right, thank you. This is, I find this very helpful to have more concrete numbers of what kind of, you know, how many houses we are looking at now in Pittsburgh and what, to guide us going forward and figuring out what we can use ARPA money for as far as expanding the broadband.
Okay. Like I said, I'm willing to come back anytime you want to hear from me.
Okay, great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you both, yeah.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you.
Sean, did you want to comment about Joe Gagne's comments about the Pumaineville fish not eating enough mosquitoes?
I was waiting for that. So, as some of you know, I obviously work for Fish and Wildlife. I am a fish biologist, and I don't, you know, manage Pumaineville in that sense. I'm not on the land management team that oversees that. I, so I can't speak to, you know, whether they have or they haven't, or they will or they won't, you know, help support the insect control district. I think it's a really good, you know, question that is worth reaching out to. The local person out of our Runtland office that is responsible for that would be Joel Fluehle. He's on the wildlife side of things, and it's the wildlife division, not the fisheries division, that manages state lands. So I'm really kind of on the outside of that in that sense. You know, I understand the concerns about, you know, some of the flooded areas, you know, producing mosquitoes. It's part of the natural, you know, function of wetlands. The entire Otter Creek Valley, for that matter, as I heard somebody mention earlier with the conservation easements, that the Nature Conservancy and USDA are working out with farmers and landowners up and down Otter Creek, all the way from Pittsburgh down through Brandon, Cornwall, and everywhere else. What they're trying to do is actually create more of these, you know, seasonally flooded wetlands for flood mitigation. And, you know, the added benefit and bonus of that is often, you know, wildlife habitat. But, you know, it does help to absorb floodwaters and protect infrastructure and stop damage when we get another Irene-level flood. And allowing the land to soak up that water and hold it instead of sending it down river and creating energy and power that ends up blowing out roads and bridges and things like that is really the function of a floodplain. The downside of that, obviously, is that things like to live in the water, like mosquito and black fly larvae and things like that. So I think the control district has an important function and role, you know, to help with that. How the department kind of fits into the small piece of land at Pumaineville that we own there, you know, in terms of the entire length of Otter Creek, where more and more of these conservation easements are being put in place, I don't really know because it's not what I work on with the department. But I'd be happy to talk to, you know, somebody and put them in touch with you if you want to get those specific answers. I wish I could say, yep, for sure, we're going to step up and give you whatever you need. It's just not my, it's not my area with the department. I deal with things I have fins and swim.
Thank you very much, Sean.
Thanks.
Different species of fish.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks again. I'm going to disconnect.
All right, take care.
All right, thanks. Bye.
Bye.
Can you turn it off there?
All right. Discuss town meeting preparations.
Yes, several things. First, because our last meeting took place before the governor actually signed the bills to allow us to make changes to town meeting, it's probably prudent to, for someone to move to reaffirm those decisions, which are basically, A, to allow town meeting to go forward this year with a pre-meeting information session via Zoom, followed by mailing of Australian ballots to every voter in town, which they can return on or before Election Day, Tuesday, March 1st. So maybe we can get to that point, and somebody will make the motion. Second, we have set up the Town Report dedication ceremony for Wednesday, February 16th at 9:00. Again, it'll be hybrid like last year, with some people here in the conference room and some via Zoom. We've had Liz Sulya agree to Zoom host that event. We have informed our town moderator, Kevin Carvey, that once again, his debut will have to be postponed a year, and that we will look forward to working with him next year when we have town meeting in person. And then finally, Kelly has agreed to handle Zooming duties for the February 28th Public Information Meet.
Did we, and we ever get a more concrete number on how much it's going to cost to send out ballots?
Helen has confirmed that there's 2,300 voters. Are you there, Helen? Do you have any idea on the cost of that mailing of ballots? Is Helen there on the phone?
Hi, John.
Oh, yes, hi.
We have 2,336 today. We expect that to continually go back and forth.
And do we know how much per voter it will cost to mail them ballots? Is it just a matter of postage really, for the most part?
Yes, postage.
By the way, there is a resolution if somebody wanted to make that motion to reaffirm what we did at the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Talk about it.
Okay. On favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Kelly, I'll get that resolution to you in case you want it for the minutes.
Yeah, it worked well last year.
Yeah, I know. We just got paid for, reimbursed for the ballot slash. Yeah, I know, we just got paid for, reimbursed for the ballots last year. All right, and sign town meeting warning?
Yes, and last time the board approved it along with the budgets and tonight's the night that we need signatures on the warning. So if you're willing, I'll send it around there, Joe.
Are we voting on whether to sell, buy, tell them or not?
The vote is going to be on item six here, see if the town voters want to do it, want to allow for that to happen.
That'll be interesting.
What'll be interesting is to see Joe Gagne's pickup truck at the retail opening.
Yeah, here we go. Yeah. With boards on it so I can get a whole big load.
There you go, yeah. Yeah. Roll down the windows. There you go, yeah. Hey, let me start going and go, I'll give you a free bail.
Yeah, I'll help you.
Oh, my God.
I see where they're, I think they're looking for people who raise barley so they could make more beer here in the state or something. There was no news about that.
Beer's a good thing.
Nothing wrong with that.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yep.
Everybody was going, yeah. A lot of them quit.
Right. A lot of fly-by-night operations.
I had a couple of, I wanted at least 10 acres, but I kind of held off. Just see what kind of a mess I had. There you go, throw it away. Have a rock pile to go pick up.
Throwing paper at us.
Of course, I'd find it handy if they put the sign page on the front and not the back.
Well, it would, but, you know. Maybe our next town manager will do that.
Yes, maybe you'll be.
Maybe he'll be kinder to us.
There's always a complainer in everyone.
He or she.
I just, he complained, I'm just.
He or she will no doubt be kinder until they get to know you.
Yeah, wouldn't have to fumble it so much.
Good point.
All right, we need to authorize the town manager to bid at town's tax sale.
Yes, usually the town bids its own amount based on the taxes plus attorney's fees and costs.
Don't make the motion, we allow John to do that.
On favor, say aye.
Aye. That was easy.
All that extraneous discussion.
It's all right, John.
Just don't bid too high.
No, not a penny more.
It's coming out of your checkbook.
You got it down to just one, ain't you?
Two. Maybe we'll get, maybe we'll get it down to zero. I hope so.
That's always ideal.
Now, are we, while that's going around, are we able to recoup the attorney's cost from all that if they pay it off?
Uh, yes. Yes, yes, that's part of the payout. Everybody so far that has resolved their debt has had to deal with their attorney's fees.
They decide probably better to.
Oh, yeah, because we had, what, $3,000, $4,000 worth of attorney's fees on just that.
Yeah.
Sure, taxes are that much higher.
All right, and then finally, there's an application for a right-of-way permit on Goat Farm.
Yes, Kevin and Stephanie Neal have bought a property up on Goat Farm and they've asked for a permit to build a driveway and Chad Ujier has gone out, taken a look, collected these maps, which show the parcel, which is about 3,000 feet away from the Adams Road intersection and a diagram of what they have in mind.
Don't make the motion, we approve it as long as they follow his guidelines.
All in favor, say aye.
So Chad is good with this.
He is. His only condition is that there be a 15-inch culvert installed so that the driveway also is sloped to avoid water coming into the road. That's the, yes, the usual one.
Yeah, no, I just wanted that on the record.
It was all written in there.
I know it is, but I wanted it on the record here too so that if it doesn't get done, yes. So, aye.
Gotcha.
And Kelly would probably want a copy of that. Yeah.
I think you need a whole.
What?
We did.
We did.
Oh, you did?
Oh, well, no, he interrupted.
I interrupted in the right place.
That's it, bingo.
Aye. I thought we'd gotten there.
No, no, that's, we got to be careful.
Yeah, and the teeniest lines ever.
We've got that all chopped up in the little lobs all the way along that road.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, my God. All right, then I think unless there's anything else that ends the open part of our meeting before we go into executive.
Thank you, viewers.